Good evening, everyone. So this meeting is being recorded. Courtney will announce that also. It's being recorded to be used for people to view after this meeting, this evening.
Recording in progress.
See? What I'd like to do before we start is if someone who is online remotely, you all have your little microphones turned off. If you could let us know if you can hear us. And then please, someone respond so that we can see if we can hear you in the conference room if you do have questions.
Nobody else is there.
They're on, I don't know why they're not.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Hmm? Annie, are you there? Can you do this for us? Someone? Jay? Jay Tetslov, are you there? Can you tell us if you turn your speaker off and see if we can hear you? Jay? Okay. Jay? Antonella? We want to make sure that the remote participants can hear us. Hmm?
Who's the host right now? Because that has to be tied into our system.
I am the host. I'm hosting.
I can hear you. It's Antonella. I can hear you.
But I think it's my microphone.
That's the easiest way.
That's fine.
I guess I just assumed we were hooked into the audio since my...
No, it's fine. So if people need to talk to us later, just dip the microphone down to your speaker and everyone else will hear it, okay? That'll work.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Antonella. All right. So you guys can hear us. And people who are online, when, if and when you need to ask a question or speak, we will arrange that you'll also be able to be heard by the participants in the room here this evening. So, okay. With all that out of the way, I wanted to welcome everyone and thank you for coming to our zoning forum this evening. I'm Lisa O'Donnell, and I'm the current chair of the planning board. And the other board members are here with me as well this evening. These are all our board members. Tonight's format will include a brief introduction from me, followed by a presentation by Courtney Lewis from the Metropolitanary Planning Commission, who has been our partner in helping us update and reorganize our zoning bylaw. After Courtney's presentation, we'll take a few minutes to answer questions that attendees may have. Depending on the time available, we may or may not take comments since we don't want to lose the time allotted to the interactive exercise that's planned for the second part of the forum. To provide some background and information and context for this evening's presentation and the interactive exercise, which comes towards the end of the forum, I'd like to provide some background about zoning districts in general and then specifically here in Essex. Cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth rely on use-based districts such as commercial, industrial, or residential districts to provide property owners with both rights and protections. Use-based districts outline what property uses are and are not allowed in defined areas of cities and towns with a primary goal usually being to protect neighborhoods and residential areas from unwanted or inappropriate commercial activity in these areas, while also establishing areas in a town that are suitable for commercial development. Of the 351 cities and towns in this state, only five of them have not had use-based districts, with Essex historically being one of these and the only one in the eastern half of the state that did not have zoning districts defined, defining permitted uses. This has recently changed somewhat with the adoption of several districts in recent years. Two small residential districts were created about eight or nine years ago to be able to sell properties at Canoma Point. More recently, the downtown district was adopted to allow mixed-use buildings by right along Main Street and adjacent stretches of Martin Street and Eastern Avenue. Then last month at Fall Town Meeting, we adopted a general use district which encompasses all of the property in town that is not in one of the three smaller districts, which are only 2% of the land area. So the new general use district includes 98% of the property here in town. Without zoning districts in town, Essex has historically permitted by right any property use anywhere in town. That is, if a property meets the dimensional requirements for a particular use, then that use, whether business or industrial or residential, is allowed by right anywhere in town. Our new general use district does not change these permitted uses. It simply formalizes the area of Essex, which is not in one of the three smaller districts as an official district so that it can be organized better in the actual bylaw document. But in this district, all uses permitted in Essex, including residential, business, and industrial, are all still permitted throughout that district, which I said is 98% of the land area of town. So the conversation that we are hoping to start with residents, homeowners, and property owners is where in town it would be appropriate to add use restrictions, essentially establishing residential neighborhoods or neighborhoods that are primarily residential but may allow limited business uses. These are protections that are available to homeowners in virtually every other town in the state, but not something currently provided by our bylaw. We do have flexibility to define what uses new districts could or could not allow in that we could tailor residential districts to possibly allow other similar and appropriate uses or not. This is all part of the conversations that we want to have with residents. In addition, we also have a category of uses that are allowed through the special permit process only. We could expand those categories to more carefully tailor uses to certain areas of town, such as permitting certain business uses in residential areas, but only through the special permit process. Another aspect of how things are currently established here in Essex with the new general use district is that since all uses are allowed in that district, we don't need, right now, to spend time or effort working to define either business or industrial districts. These uses are allowed by right anywhere in the general use district. And any areas that remain in the general use district and do not become part of a residential district, we'll continue to have all of these uses permitted by right. Finally, two procedural things to mention regarding zoning bylaws is that first, any changes need to be proposed and voted on in-town meeting and to receive a two-thirds approval vote. And second, that even if new districts are proposed and accepted, existing uses are grandfathered in, and new district regulations cannot disallow existing legal uses that were in place before the bylaw changes. And that's all I have to say. So I will turn the meeting over to Courtney, and he's going to walk us through a review of the project so far and then to talk about neighborhoods and place types and all sorts of good zoning things. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you all for... Thank you all for coming out this evening, especially with it being so cold. I'm joined this evening online via Zoom by my colleague Jiwan Park, who's a planner in the land use department with myself at MAPC. We have been working with the town since the beginning of the year on this project, actually even longer than that. And we're glad at the turnout for this evening. Next slide. So as Lisa mentioned, tonight's session will be recorded so that it can be uploaded to the project webpage. For those who were not able to join, to be able to review tonight's recording. So here's a quick look at tonight's agenda. The evening will be broken up into two portions. As Lisa mentioned, we'll do a presentation and Q and A. And then we'll have a mapping exercise with those who are physically here in the room. But folks online will also be able to engage with an interactive map and provide feedback as well. And that option will be open to the entire community until after the first of the year because we want to continue to collect input and information. We, Lisa walked us through the welcoming introduction. And so we'll talk a little, I'll talk a little bit about the project background and then talk about the reason we're here tonight and tonight's activities. I also want to just quickly note, Betty Viano, I saw you online. She's a, she used to work at MAPC in the HR department. So it's good to see you still involved and plugged in. This is the project team. We've been working closely with the, with the towns, with town staff, the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen. Andrea, my colleague Andrea, who was previously working on the project, as well as Dana, have had sessions with the local zoning ambassadors for this project, just keeping folks abreast of the project and the process and kind of gathering support for ways that the community can continue to engage. So this project was broken up into three different phases. Phase one was the, we, we went through the town zoning bylaw and looked at some of the issues. We also gathered input from members of the community about their interactions with the bylaw as well as town staff with enforcing rules and regulations. And then we put together a set of recommendations. Next slide. And so, as I was mentioning, the project is broken up into three separate phases. Phase one was looking at the zoning bylaw and providing recommendations on updates. The second phase was the recodification and community vision. So providing, gathering input from the community on improvements and ways that the town's zoning regulations could better align with future growth as well as residents' current needs. And then we, after annual town meeting in May, we transitioned into phase three, and we've really been working there really since the beginning of the physical year, the calendar year. And phase three focused on ways to improve and update the zoning bylaw through text amendments, but also, and also working with a clean slate with the reorganized and reformatted bylaw. We'll, we'll continue working with the town into the summer of 2024. We'll provide, we'll get the town set up. There's a lot of work, and there are a lot of moving pieces with the, with the project. And so we'll get the town set up and provide them with information and the resources to be able to continue to do a lot of, a lot of this work even once we step away. And then the town is able to move at its own pace with modifying things and getting things passed. So there were a few goals in phase one. We wanted to understand the town's existing land use patterns, and we'll look at a map of that this evening. We wanted to gauge people, people's opinions and thoughts about their interactions with, with the bylaw. And we also wanted to highlight some current best practices. And that came in the form of the set of recommendations from the first phase. We ended up with three high, we ended up with eight high-level recommendations from phase one. And that allowed the town to be able to apply for grant funding from the state to be able to do subsequent, do work in subsequent phases of the project. We made these recommendations based both on current best practices but also on feedback that we gathered through, from the public during phase one. As I mentioned, we held, earlier this year, we had, we held our first community forum during the second phase. And we gathered feedback. In that first forum, we asked participants to, to provide feedback on, and character descriptions of the community. That feedback was then taken, and we used that to really structure tonight's activities with looking at place types. And I'll discuss that in just a moment. And I'm going to turn it over to Jiwan to talk a bit about the second phase of the project, which Lisa highlighted in her opening remarks. Well, I'll take it from, I'll do this one as well. So as a, as a first step, we wanted to give the town a clean slate. We wanted to look at ways to make the zoning bylaw a bit easier to read and navigate. So the first step was basically just reformatting and restructuring the existing bylaw that is a living document. And that process is, is still ongoing. But in, as a first step, the, this was brought to town meeting. And other than the way that the information was structured and laid out, nothing from that, from that first step changed. Anything in the bylaw, no text changed. It was simply the location and the organization of the document itself. And as I mentioned, it was brought to town meeting and passed. Now I'll hand it over to my colleague to talk a bit about phase three.
Yeah, I am going to walk you through some of the areas of the zoning bylaw that have been updated through the past town fall meeting in November, as some of the things were already mentioned by Lisa at the beginning. So I'm going to do some of the background first and then briefly explain what has been passed in the previous meeting. So the first area was codifying the general use district. Approximately 98% of the Essex land area lay within the town's unofficial general zoning district. But the district wasn't really codified in the town's previous zoning bylaw. So there was a need to officialize this district so that developments happening in this area are properly reviewed and regulated. And another area that was addressed was updating the site plan review. In the zoning bylaw, some uses are allowed by right, but some uses may also require site plan review. For your information, a site plan review is a tool that the planning board can attach some conditions to the permit for a project to, you know, minimize any negative impacts in the surroundings. So having a strong site plan review can deter the development that could potentially have negative impacts on the surroundings and in the town in general. Lastly, definitions in the zoning bylaw are also a very important part for providing clarity for all people who have to comply with the bylaw. Some of the existing definitions in the zoning bylaw before, before this fall town meeting were vague or missing, which made the permitting process more challenging. So based on this background, during the fall town meeting, the general use district has been codified. And the section included principal use regulations, regulations pertaining to parking and accessory buildings or structures, dimensional regulations, and non-conforming lots and structures. And also, the site plan review was updated to include more specific guidelines such as purpose, projects requiring site plan review, criterias, exemptions, and procedures. On top of that, some definitions were added or amended based on the review of existing ones. Some of the examples of added definitions include hotel, motel, impervious surface coverage, mixed use, et cetera. Lastly, the temporary moratorium on business and industrial conversion was extended. So the, so what's next? The next step will be basically to explore district zoning based on the result of the place type mapping exercise that will be happening today and also review some of the special permit categories and applicability. And also explore more categories of permitted uses and clarify those so that those permitted uses can be properly reviewed and regulated going forward. I will pass it over to Courtney again for, to walk you through the place type mapping exercise today.
So through discussions with the community and the planning board, the discussion of district-based zoning concerned some, concerned a number of people. And we wanted to make sure that we were approaching things in a way that the community could digest and be able to wrap their head around. And so tonight's activity and, tonight, we're introducing a set of draft place types. And place types are basically a framing tool, a planning tool, that helps look at not only existing land use but also helps the town plan for future development. And also looks at preserving existing, existing neighborhoods as well as what a lot of people would consider are called community fabric. They, place types are not zoning, and they're not intended to, they don't carry any additional regulations. They're actually a more holistic approach to traditional zoning, which tends to focus heavily on uses for a piece of property as well as density and intensity. Whereas place types look at, they look at those things, but they also look at how, how uses, they also look at harmonious uses and appropriate uses. And they help to, they, they look at building form as well as character and connectivity and preservation of parks and open spaces. So they look at, they look at, they go beyond land use, traditional land use, to focus on not only how property, property is regulated, but how people interact and engage with these spaces. Next slide. So as I mentioned, it looks at land use but also built forms. So what structures look like. They help establish, they help establish, enforce, and also contribute to community character for future or proposed developments. They look at how people move through their community, both in vehicles, through public transit, and also pedestrian traffic. Go back one side. And they also look at quality of life and quali, quality of life infrastructure and natural and environmental resilience. So looking at things like the marsh, which help with flood control, preserving parks and open spaces that offer natural resources and, and services for, natural services for the community. So as I mentioned in the first forum, when we kicked off phase two, we, we asked members of the community to provide character descriptions of different areas of town. There were a number of people who contributed to, who participated and contributed comments on a mapping exercise here at that first kickoff meeting. And then we had even more interaction online through using an interactive mapping tool through a platform called Social Pinpoint. People were able to provide comments and input. But we even had people upload photographs so that we had somewhat of a visual vocabulary to start to capture some of, some of, some of the feedback that we had heard from community members. So the first three place types, these place types focus on, as I mentioned, areas where people in the community live, work, and play. The first two are Neighborhoods 1 and 2. Neighborhood 1 is predominantly characterized, oh, yes. You can also refer to your handouts. This information is there as well. And it'll, it will also be posted online for you to refer to and reference. And keep in mind, these are drafts. So we're also taking comment and feedback on these descriptions and hoping to continue to build on these as we move forward in the process. So Neighborhood 1 is predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods. These are detached homes. And this area is characterized as having more of a rural character and supports some of the, some of the landscapes that are found throughout town. Some of the older, some of the older and also farms that are still in, in use even today. The principal land uses include, as I mentioned, single-family detached homes, agricultural uses. And then secondary land uses support limited business. So things like home occupation, occupations. Neighborhood 2 is similar to Neighborhood 1. However, it's more, it's more suburban in nature. These are, these are typically smaller homes on, on smaller lots and concentrated closer to the town center. These, these types of neighborhoods could potentially support, these, these types of place types could potentially support greater investment in walking and biking infrastructure and help build great, more connectivity throughout town. They, secondary uses in that particular place type also include recreational facilities and civic and institutional uses. Things like churches, schools, and things like that. Neighborhood 3 is characterized by multi- Neighborhood three is characterized by multifamily residential. This area provides a bit more variety in terms of housing choices, and include small to mid-scale multifamily buildings. These are typically integrated or positioned at more, in more active areas of town, and they also provide neighborhood services and amenities, and also would support walking and biking infrastructure. Secondary land uses for this particular place type include small-scale retail and commercial, things like restaurants, cafes, as well as public facilities, public and civic facilities. And those are the three residential place types. So looking at places that are, where people recreate, and also those areas of town that provide those environmental services, the parks and the open space and protected land place type includes parks, playgrounds, recreational fields, as well as wildlife habitat and corridors. They can include a range of different uses based on the level of appropriate, based on whether a use is appropriate. There are some areas that are more environmentally sensitive than others, and are better suited for more passive uses. Again, this includes, secondary uses, principal and secondary uses include things like agriculture, outdoor recreation, and wildlife habitat corridors. The next two place types are business and neighborhood business. The business place type is characterized, is more auto-centric. It accommodates areas of town that are usually traveled by car, and are, would be difficult or impossible to get to without an automobile. This includes areas of town that are closer to the town center, areas along Main Street that provide retail, trade, and personal and professional services. Neighborhood businesses are smaller-scale businesses, and they tend to be integrated in residential areas, predominantly residential areas, but they also provide opportunities for community members to have local needs met. So things like quick trips to a grocery store or convenience store, things that you would use in your day-to-day errands or activities. And then the final two place types are industrial. The town's existing bylaw has two different industrial classes, but they had very little description other than the square footage requirement for specific uses. So industrial class A are higher, include higher intense industrial uses, but they also act as areas of town that provide jobs and employment opportunities, and principal uses in these areas tend to be light industrial uses as well as, as well as business. And then we have limited industrial, which is class B, and these are lower intensity industrial and employment uses, and they include things like offices, research and development labs, storage facilities, warehousing, and distribution. These include a mix of uses. For instance, this, the image that's shown here, you have this commercial use that's right next door to, that also is also on the same parcel of land as a residential use. So they tend to be uses that aren't, that wouldn't necessarily be a nuisance to, to community members, or they better accommodate a mix, a greater mix of uses. So with that being said, want to open it up for questions, and happy to respond or explain a bit more. I'm sorry, for the recording purposes, would you mind using the mic here just so everyone can hear you and so the question is captured?
Can you define what the term industrial means versus commercial?
That is something that, oh.
Our, our, commercial tends to encompass both what we have in our bylaw defined as business and industrial, and so business is considered more service-oriented and engaged places that people could visit in the community, whereas industrial tends to be not a place you would visit, but a place that, a manufacturing, a warehouse, something like that, where they employ people, they have deliveries come and go, but they're not necessarily public-facing. So that's sort of the difference between industrial and business, and it all comes under the umbrella of commercial, but our bylaw defines separately business and industrial.
Do you define industrials as manufacturing?
Yes.
Okay, and so, one is a limited industrial, so limited manufacturing?
Our bylaw has industrial A and industrial B, and this may be something that we revisit in the future. The differences are primarily in the size of the facilities, so industrial A is typically larger facilities, industrial B is smaller, and then there are also regulations around the hours worked, so that industrial A category has the ability to have shifts that are off hours, and industrial B is limited to normal working hours.
And manufacturing then, or is it?
It could include manufacturing.
And I, I just want to highlight that that is something that we're, something that that was mentioned as a next step. We're currently working on looking at expanding and better classify, better classification of the town.
Okay, thank you.
We also want to give folks online an opportunity to ask questions as well, so we'll bounce back and forth. So Juwan, if you can just help me keep an eye on folks who may raise their hand.
Before I ask my question, I'll call the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:43. I noticed in here that there are two place types that include parks. Neighborhood two includes parks, as does the parks one. I'm wondering if there's a certain size limit that you would include it in Neighborhood two, that it, you know, is under a certain size limit, or it's large enough that it would be included in the parks and open space?
I, that will be, I mean, that is hope, that is part of what we're hoping to tease out, to further tease out through some of the exercises, but some of it, as I mentioned, depends on how, how the land is used, whether it's more of an active or recreational use, and looking at capacity-wise, whether it can accommodate, you know, one thing or another.
Yeah, so it's more the use type than the size?
Yes, yeah.
I would think it would also be a little bit sized, because Neighborhood two is characterized by more of a suburban feel, so it would be facilities that would fit within that, whereas the open space was sort of picked for Essex, because we do have a lot of preserved open space as well. So the, the open space and larger recreation areas would be the, the green and the middle yellow is the smaller parks, I guess.
Thank you. We would also reference and be looking towards the town's open space and recreation plan. There are often parcels and pieces of land that have been kind of eyed for conservation purposes moving forward, so looking ahead and making sure that that's considered in the way the land is used.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm having a hard time distinguishing neighborhood business from just the general business category. In part, it's, I think, the picture of Chewbacca Market, which, I mean, is serving that area of town, but it's not. I'm just wondering about the value of drawing that distinction as I think about the businesses that we have in town, so if someone could speak to that.
The, and this doesn't necessarily, these place types are not necessarily meant to just note existing conditions in town. It also is to help frame where, where, locations that would be most appropriate for future uses. But the difference between the general business and the neighborhood business is really the neighborhood business looks at, like I mentioned, those day-to-day services that are already integrated into traditionally residential areas. It's also intended to accommodate existing businesses that have been in the community for several years, just ensuring that they have a place moving forward, that just because in the future, a certain area may be zoned residential, that business use would still be allowed to continue.
Okay. I think a little of the distinction between business in general and neighborhood business too is that if you look at sort of our downtown district, which really isn't part of the discussion anymore, because it has been districted, there's a lot of, obviously, businesses there that draw people from other communities, between the antique stores and the restaurants, et cetera, whereas a neighborhood business has more of the sense of servicing the immediate neighborhood, and isn't necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily come from Beverly to go to Chewbacca Market, but you would come from anywhere in that whole neighborhood to visit Chewbacca Market, because that's your local market. So there's a little nuance there, and the idea of separating these out is as we talk about finding perhaps areas in town that are suitable for a residential district, that we also are, keep, keep in mind the need for these neighborhood businesses, so that we don't necessarily draw residential districts that preclude any business, but perhaps we have the ability to define appropriate businesses that are suitable for neighborhoods.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
We have a question online here, and the question is, why isn't home occupation included as a bullet in Neighborhood two? And they said, thank you, which is very nice. So the answer there is that home occupation is allowed by right everywhere in Essex. So we haven't even sort of rolled that into the conversation, because it has always been a right in Essex, and it's not something that we're really looking at altering at this point. And down the road, as we continue to work on bylaw improvements, we may add some tweaks to home occupations, just to make it clear what is and is not a home occupation, but right now, that is not a particular focus of what we're doing, since it's already established by right everywhere, and will continue to be.
Also, I think in Neighborhood one, it doesn't have any business types, and so it's just highlighted that even though Neighborhood one is pretty strictly rural or single-family, that occupation, home occupation would still be allowed, it's not meant to be excluded.
Any other questions, or should we get on to the exercise? We have a question?
David Davis, King's Court. I do think it'd be useful to define industrial, because with these magic devices, one searches for definitions, and it's a very broad mix, and I think for many of us, we see smokestacks, and we see the conversion of raw materials, and not, I think, I will just say, I'm also a sentimental person, I'm sorry not to see the word agriculture in here.
I'm sorry, it's not listed on the handout sheet, but agricultural is definitely part of the Neighborhood one characteristic, we just missed that on the sheet, but it's the rural.
I said I'm sentimental, I'd just like to see it.
So do we, we're all sentimental, we like Essex the way it is, so.
I just have a quick question. Can you, I'm trying to understand conceptually what the word district means, and how it will be applied to different areas of town. Are you talking about a district in the context of an area with dimensions, or a, some parameter to allow for growth?
So typical zoning districts are drawn around a set of parcels. So a district outline, like the three districts that we have, follows the lot lines of the properties that are considered in that district.
So by definition, it's a facility, the district is the facility that...
The district is, a district is a mapping exercise, and it's actually, I don't know, Juwan, can you put up the big map of Essex? I don't know if you can get to that.
In other words, all the districts that we're trying, I'm trying to get a definition of district, and how, in what context you're applying that. And what you just said was that, like Chewbacca Mark, that building would be a district, is what I heard you say.
No, no, a district is a whole area of town that is comprised of numerous parcels of property. So if you look at our downtown district, it includes all of the property along Main Street, all of the property along Eastern Avenue up to School, School Street, I think? No?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and then Martin Street down to Shepherd Memorial Drive. So it's a, it's a, a district is an outline on a map that encompasses a set of properties, and those properties within that outline are regulated by whatever district regulations are formalized in our bylaw.
So conceptually, you could have two different districts in one area, is that correct?
You could not have overlapping districts, if that's what you mean.
Yeah.
No.
I just want to also note that place types are not zoning districts. This is, this is a tool to help us have the conversation about, about appropriate land uses.
Right, so the place types are thinking about the way that land is used in Essex, and the way that we want to use land in Essex. So the place type exercise is something where we get to understand how people want the town to look, and the protections that they want. and the protections that they want. And then we take that information, that informs the actual mapping exercise where we draw hard lines around certain areas of town and say, "This is Residential One." And in Residential One, you can have single-family homes, two-family homes, and I'm making this all up. This is totally hypothetical. Single-family, two-family, agricultural uses, and small convenience stores, or something like that. But then those uses are set for that district, and that district has a hard outline on the map.
So in other words, they can have multiple types?
Yes, the, the, the definition of uses in a district is at our discretion. And our, I mean, I don't, I say "our" meaning planning boards doing the legwork with M A P C, but we bring it to town meeting and to other forums to talk to everyone about, this is what we're thinking in this area of town based on the feedback that we've gotten, and we'll vet it through other forums. And then at some point, that zoning map and the definition of uses in a particular district would go to town meeting to get voted on.
Right, but, but a district could have one or two different types.
Exactly, so as an example, we have a district now that is the general use district that we voted in at town meeting in November. And it's a big outline of the whole town of Essex minus downtown district and the Two Canoe Mall Point district. So it's drawn as a general use district, and in that general use district, everything is allowed right now because everything has always been allowed at Essex. So we can continue to have that general use district that allows everything, and we may draw other residential districts that we essentially carve out of that general use district. But the general use district with all uses still stays. So you can put any uses in a district as long as you define them, and it's clear.
Okay, great, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, I'll stop.
Let's go to the exercise.
All right. Juwan, can you? Let's see. Can you? So just a few quick instructions for those online. And I'll walk through, we'll walk through a, a demonstration of using the tool online. And again, don't worry, we'll be collecting feedback, like I said, until after the first of the year. So even if you attend tonight's meeting and you put physical dots on the map, you, you still can provide feedback online. That option is still open and available. So take a look at the handout that you were given, look over at the place types. And for those that are in the room, you'll place a sticker, a color-coded sticker that correlates with that place type on a, on a map. And we can go into further instructions as we gather around the table for the exercise. And for those who are, and also provide comments with the sticky notes for those that are joining online. There is a QR code on your screen now. The, the link is also listed. This information will also be posted on the project page, webpage. But you can access the site using the social pinpoint site using that code to provide input. As I mentioned, it's not just placing the dots. You can also leave comments and upload photographs that help further describe or that further emphasizes or supports your comment.
Yeah, if that's helpful, I can quickly walk people through the online space.
And a, a video with instructions will also be posted. Just in case you miss something.
Yeah, I'm just putting the address to the chat. And then when you go to the website, you will see the instruction, like on the About tab, you will see the instruction about how to do it and more instructions and explanations about this exercise. So basically, how you do is drag this comment markers to the specific places you want to identify, and then drop it on the map. So it will pop up this comment window that you can comment further about why you think this place has certain place type and, you know, provide more reasons of your decision. And then basically, you can type your email and first name, last name, but this is not mandatory. But we would appreciate if you can provide the information. And you can also check this remember box so that you don't have to type all this information over and over and again. So yeah, that's basically how it works. And this website will up and running until early next year, so people can come back and put more comments on the map.
You'll al, you'll also be able to see what your neighbors are posting as well and turn, and what, and their, look at their thoughts about what, what place types should be where. So just to clarify some things, there are, this, this map is layered. And I may make a minor tweak because I think the, the, the boundary is a bit too thick for the, the town boundary. But the areas we're interested in, in gathering information about place types are those areas that are not currently shaded. These are areas of the general use district. And the areas outside of that include the exist, the town's existing zoning districts as well as areas that are primarily reserved or al, already considered protected park, uh, protected open space. So there, there are opportunities. We did include, and the, the parks and open space place type in the mapping exercise because we also want to know those areas that would benefit from additional buffers. For instance, areas surrounding the towns. Waters, it's the watershed overlay district, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Which has areas.
Water resource protection overlay.
So yeah, I think we're gonna go back to the PowerPoint very quickly.
Courtney, can you, excuse me, can you point out the downtown district on this map?
Yes, it, I think that, I think on this, well, actually, Ju, it's, we're sharing Juwan's screen, but I think that the layer is, is built into the map. I just don't think that it's currently displayed. I don't think she has that layer turned on.
And, and the green, all of that is conservation or some sort of preserved property, right?
It's not necessarily protected open space. It's just, it is open space. Some, some, the levels of protection vary parcel by parcel. But as it stands currently today, these are areas that are open space or they are currently vacant. This also includes like landlocked parcels that are not in current use.
And so you can turn on the business district? It's just turned off right now?
Yes, yes, you can toggle the layers on and off.
And then, just to clarify, the Neighborhood Two, the neighborhood business and the limited industrial are all gray up there? Is that coordinating with your colors here? Like, the gray is, I'm not sure what it's identifying. Is it identifying to the color code on your?
The, the whole purpose of the exercise is to not, is to fill in the colors in the blank area. So it's, it's not really gray, it's blank.
Oh, okay, that's better to understand. Okay, that's blank.
It's the areas that it's all areas that are largely residential or in use right now, but it's, it's, it's not protected. It was the idea to show the protected land and then, because the protected land isn't something that is going to change, so. That was a, and the, and the exercise is to look at the land that is, is in the general use district to start to understand how it's used or how we want to see it used so that as we start to look at potentially drawing further zoning districts, we understand how people feel the land should be used.
And how did you decide with Neighborhood One, the yellow, like, how did you decide the areas there? Like, there's so few.
No.
Okay, so none of these are.
The, the other thing that I want to know is, this is just the first, this is just a first draft, a first pass. There'll be other iterations of this exercise and the process. So just because you put something on the map and in a particular spot does not mean that that's, that's the end of discussion.
Yeah, so currently on the map, none of the place types are showing that we're going to be doing tonight.
Back to definitions. I do think industry, it's important to know because when you say high intense uses next to industrial, it does suggest a form of industry that I was, the smokestack one. But that's not why I came back. I came back because under business, it says mostly auto-oriented places. Now, auto-oriented, auto-oriented places, in the three definitions I found, suggest those that discourage pedestrians. Do we really want to have a business district that discourages pedestrians? I don't know whether, where you've traveled recently, but most major cities and most communities are encouraging pedestrians. And so I don't, I, I worry about seeing a definition like this and thinking auto-oriented is read as automobile oriented and doesn't have a hyphen because auto-oriented means something which I think is terrific, encouraging pedestrians. And I think it's important that language and intention are, are paid attention to here. Thanks.
That's, those are the comments that we want to hear. The level speci, specifics for some of these descriptions and refinement. But also, these are areas, these are meant to describe areas in town that currently exist. The town does not have public transit. There are limited options for walking and biking in town. It's meant to identify those areas and look for ways to create greater connections.
Courtney, I know you talked about updating the map on here, the layers. For me, it'd be super helpful if the protected open spaces were identified. And those are things that we know are protected and are not up for change. But just knowing it's open space currently, like, this is confusing because some of these things I know are protected and others aren't.
Well, that, that, that is what, uh, that is a bit outside of the scope of this particular. We chose to display open spaces as a land use, not, we're not necessarily focused on the level of protection. That's, that's a separate issue, and I think that's something that, that is better addressed and identified in open space and recreation plans. And it, it really, I've done several O S R Ps. It, you can, you could spend years going back and forth trying to track down, you know, which, this parcel is protected, but this one is not. This one is owned by a trust, this one's a, a conservation agency, and so it...
So we don't, we don't have a layer that shows?
In order to get, well, there, there are discrep, there will be several discrepancies. There are discrepancies with the layer that's provided by the state versus what local people know to be. So the thing, the focus of tonight's exercise and activity was to show these are where parks and open spaces exist as of now. To note areas of appropriateness for, for future uses, not necessarily to kind of...
Yeah, I understand the challenge you're presenting. I, I just, it'd be easier if, if we had that, but we don't have it, so that's what we'll work with.
Well, I, I think we have it. It's, that's been something that's been shared. But again, you'll, you'll run into people who will, there will be discrepancies depending on which map someone's looking at. And that's, that's a, I feel like it's an entirely separate matter that has to be, that's sorted out separate from.
Okay.
So I'd like to ask another question. So when we're doing this exercise tonight, are we supposed to be plotting where we think neighborhood should be? Neighborhood One, Neighborhood Two, and also where Neighborhood One types exist?
No, it should be where you, where you feel that, that this place type should exist.
Should or does?
Should.
Okay, so if I think something should be open space, I should put a marker that says this should be open space? If it's got, you know what I'm saying? What is the, where's the boundary between saying, "Oh, this is a business area and should be a business area," or "I think this area should be a business area"?
Because as of now, there's nothing that... There's an existing land use map, which we're gonna look at. But as of now, the way that the zoning is written, it doesn't matter. It could be, it could be, uh... We're less, we're, we're less concerned about...
So you're, you're really just wanting us to look at what we want to see in places, what we think is appropriate. And it's not so much, we took all the uses off so that we could look at it without sort of pre-existing conditions. So we want to, we all know what's in places, but we're not coloring the map that way. And the idea is to think about Essex and where you think that certain uses would be appropriate. I think that's what we're trying to do, right?
Yes.
Because we, we, we do have, M A P C has prepared an entire map that is based on the assessors' codes for the land uses on every parcel. But we didn't want to provide that map because it shows you what is there now. So the idea was to think about Essex and the areas that you know and what you would like to see as the appropriate uses in certain areas. So it, it's an exercise about where does business belong, where does industrial belong, and what kinds of neighborhoods belong in which areas? So there, again, there's the three sort of neighborhood characteristics.
Can we zoom down in, in this chart or this exercise?
We're gonna do it on paper, aren't we?
Yes.
So let's, I think it's...
No, my question is, it's very difficult to figure out what we have there. So in order to accomplish what you're asking, my opinion is that you need, you need to zoom in on it.
You, you'll be able to do that, that's...
Okay, that was my question, so we will be...
When, when you're online, you can zoom in. When you're online, you can zoom in just the way Juwan is now on her computer. So you can, you can do this tonight, or you can also, you can participate tonight, but you can also go home and do this between now and the beginning of January and zoom in on a more fine-grained map. And we're, these, you have the maps here?
Yep.
Okay, so we might as well do that because it's 10 minutes after eight, this ends at 8:30, so let's just do that. And we can ask questions as we're working through it. So folks online, Juwan, do they have the setup to be able to do the social? folks online, Juwan, do they have the setup to be able to do the social pinpoint now?
I just put the address on the chat, so people will be able to access. I just wanted to clarify some of the explanation I did. So I realized the markers, only six markers are showing up on the, on the page. So I fixed the setting, so you have to basically click Add Comment, and then click one of the, one of the markers, and then try to like, locate like this, if that makes sense.
And again, instructions will, a video with instructions will also be posted, just to help you out in case. And if anything is confusing, we welcome feedback to make, this is, like I said, it's a living document. This is a, where, this is, everything's in process, so nothing's final, and we welcome comment.
Yeah, and I'll be here on the Zoom, so if you have any question while working on this website, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you all for joining online. Everyone in the room who would like to participate in the mapping exercise, I'm going to pull, pull them up to the table here.
I don't know. I came late, so I don't know what you set up, so you, you need that. I don't know what's there.